Okay, fellow discussion on any item on this agenda? On this agenda. Minutes from Commissioner's view.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna move up. We got Chad Roach and Columbia City Chair. He discussed possible take action on cleaning canyon by the city park by removing trees and hauling off trees.
Behind city park, there's a lot of trees in the canyon. We're just requesting assistance on removing them. It's causing water restrictions. It's actually gonna be very beneficial to the county, too, because, I mean, it flows downstream. Any bridge, any of the trees that are dying, falls out, clean up the bridges that Garrett's gonna have to clean out. There's erosion issues, right kind of, he'll save a lot of that, so we're just requesting that y'all would come in and help us out with this project.
This mainly is tree removal?
Yeah.
Yep. Is it talking to you yet or not?
I have not. We'll try to permit burn on location. Not worst case scenario, we have to haul to disposal, which is one, two, three, four miles from there, so pretty short haul.
That's good for me.
I'm all for it.
You made a paper now?
Yep. I say we need to do it before it gets green.
Yes.
So we have to get this done a little sooner.
You don't want that.
My trackhoe's going into Martins end of this week to have the thump, the bushings changed on the bucket, and then after that, I'm ready. Two weeks, three weeks would be good for me. First February.
We get a trackhoe on each side and let one to help.
Then we'll probably ours gets there, too.
I can get right on as soon as my trackhoe gets done, but I've already scheduled to have the bushings changed.
And if you need another trackhoe, mine's just right in the block away.
Yeah.
We can help you. We have to come on and everything.
So. Or she had the, you see you had a pit there before you burned in?
Yes, but before it was not permitted because it was lit on fire over and over. Then I was Commissioner then, and after so many fires, I finally just dug a pit.
Well, I just, where was it at? Like, it's gotta wear a hump.
There's a hump out there. And what'd you say? That's when we had that big ice storm, when we had, we had a lot of trees through town.
I just seriously got lit on fire all the time.
Yeah.
At night and night.
I think it's the third night I've been out with trackhoe, so I was just like, let's quit biting this, clean it up, be done with it.
Their whole intention is to do this is kinda help us with the Fourth of July deal and help with, uh...
Are you gonna take any of the big cedars that's on the park side right along on top of the...
I'd like for you guys to clean that all.
Clean them out.
Yeah.
I looked at it, I drove by and looked at it all yesterday pretty good, and I thought, man, if you take the trees out of the canyon, them cedars are still in the way. I'll just take them all out.
Right. The ride's swimming pool, it's causing corrosion, because there's some trees there that died as their roots brought away. It's starting to eat out there, so let's protect that.
I know, we can bring our trackhoes, get steer, grapple, and then we do, I don't know, I got about every attachment bus gets steer. There's also a tree cutter on there, so I don't know what good it'd do, but...
Yeah.
Well, cutting the trees, don't disturb the dirt of the bank, so the only problem is you're gonna have to treat them tree stumps, but they're gonna come back, so...
As soon as I take care of that, so...
Yeah.
So do you want them removed with the trackhoe or tree cutter or what? I mean...
I think you're gonna have to use trackhoe to get steer in them banks, then some of the...
Well, in a lot of ones, you can just pour right out. But I know about the big ones, if we just cut them and get them out there at the trackhoe, that'd be all right, too.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that.
You wouldn't disturb the, huh?
I'd say bring both, just to...
Well, I mean, you wouldn't, those big ones, if you just cut them, you're not gonna disturb the ground as much.
Yeah.
I think it'd be less erosion there, too. Probably help find the big stuff there.
Yeah, most of them's up on top.
Yeah.
Everything down the creek's actually the small ones.
Yeah, they're about like that.
They was all cut out at one point.
Yeah. Yeah.
Come back. So you gotta treat them.
I'll carry on spray.
Yeah, it's just a drainage.
We appreciate it.
The fish has already died, though, so...
I'm saying they're all dead now.
We basically, at AEC, we basically treat those with Pathfinder, anything that's near a, any type of tributary, waterway, just basically treat around the bottom of those. When they come back up, then it'll, it'll knock them out.
That's probably what we need to look at, because there's no need to take an expensive doing the job if you don't finish it up.
One guy and a little backpack sprayer.
Yeah.
We'll knock that out.
Well, I'm right on top of it. Anytime y'all ready, just whatever we need, if it don't rain, we're gonna have plenty of people do something.
Well, we have water scheduled, fits for the three of you guys, so...
Well, like I said, even if my trackhoe's not available, I still got equipment that can work, so I think just get on it.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You wait yourself. Three weeks, yeah.
If I give them a week and a half to get that trackhoe down, it'd probably be, it'd be nice to have the trackhoe.
Well, y'all got projects going, so we won't interrupt your project. Give it two or three weeks to get out there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next thing, we're gonna move up. Opening word bids for rigging. Can't read them with glasses on. Rigging out upgrading semi tanker for Cherokee rescue for Alpha County.
I have two bids to receive.
First one's emergency fire equipment. Looks like it's seventy-three thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
That a big bill.
Yeah. Yep.
Other one is the Dandell J custom fire, and it is seventy-four thousand six hundred thirteen.
You mind if I take the second bill with those?
Yeah.
What was that company, Nate? I didn't hear what you said.
J and L.
J and J.
J and J.
It looks like J and L.
It looks like J and L.
Garrett's furze mover.
It looks like J and L.
Do you want to move on and come back to that?
Better give a second if you want.
I think both of these guys, both of these companies came down and spent quite a bit of time going over those trucks and servicing them.
Well, they're pretty close to price, but just choose which one you think's best value.
All right, thank you. Okay, blanket for disorders, we'll come back to that.
District one, two, three, four, and County General. Okay. Those, give us some.
Nope.
See what?
Yeah, don't sign any of those.
Don't sign these?
No.
Okay.
No, see.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, back with the dirty jobs.
Do we need a wet filter first? Whatever works for you. I'm here, you're ready.
I mean, I've got several things to do, go one way. Right there, pretty close.
I'll make notes there, so we can like it's... All in favor?
Aye.
There's two copies, and I'll, I'll just sign on last page.
Anything we need to know on it?
You guys got any questions?
It's just reading into the contract, isn't it?
Yes, it's just reading the contract, exactly.
It's basically like insurance. It don't cost you nothing.
Yes.
It's not used.
If they don't...
You win, because if they find something, yes, it's gonna cost you five percent, but you're gonna gain another ninety-five percent.
Yes.
Actually, they're only charging two times five.
Really?
Yes.
That's cheaper than they used to be, then.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Yep. And everyone's treated fairly.
Yeah.
Well, they seem like they pulled quite a bit last year.
Yeah. It's a helpful, um, item for us to have in front of us.
Very beneficial for schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, make a motion, accept that. All in favor?
Aye.
Only that now?
Yeah, we'll get to all those places. So we got him no more, can you handle?
You wanna have Jennifer come in and sign them, or you want me to send them with you? I just need one of them back.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We'll get together, get an idea, we'll...
Okay. Well, we'll sneak out here then. Looks like y'all got long to do, but thank you, guys.
Oh, you wanna say for our three pager?
I've had plenty of these meetings over the years.
We've had a lot of three pagers here lately.
It's the way the honey was named. You ain't pulling that after six months, it gets real.
Exactly. Oh, they already went over it?
Just sign out, right?
Perfect.
You want copies of those, please?
Glasses, too. Yeah.
There's three lenses you can use.
I've got a dock, I got an eye docking one, but actually today, I need to get this.
I put it off as long as I could. I remember I used to...
Ah, I swear to...
Arms.
Right now.
Well, they weren't long enough.
Right.
And then you get them, you're like, why that late?
Yeah.
Finally, neighbor told you, you get his eye checked. Every time you rip with him, he'd every cough over a wood.
Maybe he's just showing you a little what the root was like.
Come find out, he's glasses pretty bad.
You guys ever take anything up to Mayfield before? You have it? I'd say major guys' glass brusher. A and B and ours, yes, they do really good.
I do like what they're doing with their hail pumps, the other brush rigs. They're an actual fire pump.
Yep. And their pump system seems to work better than...
I'm sure.
Plankets, yeah.
Did it hard enough?
I caught it. That kind of where I'm supposed to go. Then, yeah. I like it.
You caught it, though?
Linda, give me your copies back.
Thank you. Do you want one of these? Are they the same? Are they different?
No, they're the same.
Yeah, I just, I just made it, I'll make one for you guys.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna...
I just said, oh, you need two.
Nope, I just made one. Clint, we was talking about you, my grandson, I was the other day.
What?
We was talking about his mama work. I said, I don't know how we got started about the guys, but he says, they pick on me, Mamam, but it's just for fun. I said, who picks on you?
I load him up, I load him up on sugar every time he comes in.
Oh, he, yeah, he likes sugar.
Well, he got snacks on mine in the building, so we, I load him up, especially before he goes to his little school.
I picked him up from school yesterday, and he got chocolate milk.
Yeah.
And a thing of chocolate donuts, and then a huge cinnamon roll. I went, okay, we can only eat one of these, you're gonna have to save one of these for tomorrow. Well, we ate one and went to the park and played, and then we, I dropped him off at his mama's, and he drops it on the floor, gets his milk out, gets the huge cinnamon roll out, and it's not tomorrow. Yeah, it is. Mama's gonna shoot me. No, it's not. He's a cutie.
Anything I can do to annoy Jess a little?
She wasn't quite ready for him, so he went to the grocery store with me and come out with a balloon and a bag of onions, so...
It was a good time.
His mom's like, really, Mom? I'm like, hey, you're sending to the grocery store with me? We went to get air, and my niece and her little boy, who's about a year older than Lyle, was supposed to go, well, they backed out last minute, so guess who got to bounce on the trampoline for two hours?
Yeah.
Just because I go, you're not gonna walk tomorrow.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to.
We had fun.
Go across, I don't sign it all.
Bet they get used to it.
Yeah. That's a mild.
Yeah, that's a small pile. It's a good pile.
I forget they changed the name. Co-op.
Yes.
Who's Jesus name?
The Carmen of Cherokee and Allen of the world. It was Carmen, the farmer's twelve, now it's great planes. And they're, it's American planes, sorry, but they're, um, they're, W nine is in Great Bend, so we have to put it as Great Bend during business as American planes. It's snazzy new hats, Lyle had a snazzy hat on, I don't know who he was, but I can remember that.
Probably Shane.
Shane. I forgot his hat yesterday at school, so we had to go back and get his hat. How'd you get this hat?
Shane's the new big boss.
Yeah?
Shane is?
Yep. Yep. We're gonna hire another local, you know, another manager here.
Is he gonna go to Carmen or just stay out of here?
Nobody further.
I mean, I know we'll be out of all the...
I think he'll stay out of here.
He'll stay up here?
Yeah.
But I didn't know whether, I hadn't asked him that. We didn't go to church Sunday, so I didn't get to ask. Stay here or go down there?
Brian's figure fall on?
Yes, he did. Maybe there was more gabbing than there was working, and it was five in the shop, and it took, you know, an hour and a half because they gabbed. It was just convenient, and at the same time, I had to come to town, you know, and figure Lyle.
Well, we got in their way, too.
Oh, you got in their way, yeah. I said you guys were there.
We have to cut some work, so we have to do it behind, because they got done, you wait on them.
We need to come see her. Aren't we? Got another quote from M and B. Geez, that's scary, you have to do it. They quoted, it was...
Where you building?
We're building the, we just basically kind of want a carport, but then we want one side of the carport enclosed, and the other one just like a lean-to. I wanna enclose the two parts, but Brian doesn't wanna enclose the part that the camper's gonna go in. It was, the problem is it has to be so steep and tall and so stinking long for the camper. And then, do you make it longer just in case you ever get a bigger camper? I don't think we'll ever get a bigger camper, but, you know, do you take it down? I know, I know. Hey, this is like a, like a, you know, trip in paradise compared to what we use to camp. But it without concrete is sixteen thousand dollars.
Make a motion to accept the warrants. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go outside. We have, uh, J and J is, their bid is just a little higher, but we feel better about their, we feel better about their bid. It's a little more detailed as far as showing us, telling them what all they're gonna do, and maybe two trips down here and win over things, pretty, pretty happy with us, so...
The J and J bid due to value.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
About the value?
Well, not values, uh, due to better...
More detail.
More detail. Yeah, their bid was definitely more detailed.
I'm sorry, just a second.
I did.
Thank you, guys.
You guys.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all made a big call.
Yes, I appreciate it, guys.
All the way for doing all this, of course.
Yep, take care.
See you.
Okay, road crossing permits. No road crossing permits. Monthly officer reports?
I have one from the sheriff.
I hope she'll prep sign, looking at it.
Right, I couldn't see it.
Make a motion to accept the officer reports.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There it is. Okay, so, the twenty twenty-three class eight officer meetings getting...
This is changing it to every month. We're still gonna meet downstairs in the conference room, but it will be immediately following, I put ten thirty, or immediately following VOC meetings.
Stay. Make a motion to accept that.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, nine one one, ninety hundred forty, state local agreement between state of Oklahoma and Alpha County.
There is only one signature on it here. This is, um, she thought she'd already put it through the media, and this is one thing that's holding up their, um, one of their brands, so...
We need to run here?
Yep.
Yeah, good. Make a motion to accept it. Second. Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Okay, we have a gravel kit agreement between Alfa County District one and Jim Giffey.
There are two.
There's the others.
Here with two different legal.
Also shelf it. I did not, I'll let you do that one here, I did not write the date on it, because I didn't know, I couldn't work the others on a minister.
Okay, we have a declaration surplus.
Yeah.
Surplus, and then some disposal of sheriff's assessors equipment.
Do you want me, you know, you said Ashley wanted.
Oh, she doesn't matter, either or, I can do whatever, whatever's easier. And I do. Well, I get it from you later.
You wanna do the declaration first?
Yeah, I'll do the declaration surplus.
That's right, that's the issue one of there. Up here, something right there.
Oh, yeah.
Make the motion, accept the declaration surplus, second.
Hold on, favor. Aye.
That a little?
Yeah.
Okay. So, resolution to dispose of equipment.
Just the one place now. No extra places.
I'll also make your motion, we have disposed of the equipment. Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Well.
Yep.
Been so long.
Okay, so that gets us through there, I think I already did that, so private property access easel for District two. Clean out ditch and fill in the waterways. I'll make the motion, accept.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Aye.
Let's see, I don't have. I'm not in, I'm not on inventory for District one, but taking CD auction. Second, lower attachment, splayed, backhoe attachment.
These are just items that came with Skidster.
Correct, there's.
He was taking those to CD auctions, we had to have the minutes. They were not on.
They weren't on.
Should have been on inventory.
I know, they're not on inventory, Skidster's on inventory, but.
They came with the Skidster, so they all.
But they're just.
We're inventory all ours.
They're just sitting there, and they're brand new, paying on them, there's no.
Well, the Skidster won't run them over.
No, it doesn't have enough.
Backhoe's attachment, you got a backhoe, so.
Yeah, exactly, so, bend them over.